Adelaide website and a recording will also be published to the internet. Please note that, please note that an audio and visual recording is being taken of a special meeting. This means, this means that your presence and any contribution you make to the special meeting may be collected, used, disclosed or published publicly to the council by the council, including transferring outside of Australia. Council acknowledges that we are meeting in traditional country of the Ghanar people, the Adelaide Plains, and pays respect to elders past and present. We recognise and respect the cultural heritage, beliefs and relationship with the land. We acknowledge that they are continuing, continuing importance to the Ghanar people living today. And we also extend that respect to other Aboriginal language groups and other First Nations who are present today. There are no leave and absence. So with today, tonight's workshop, members, please click on your virtual hands and we'll go by that order. And also, if you cannot be seen, you're deemed as though you're not here. So please have your camera on. So that includes councillor Apahemzade, councillor Ho, councillor. That's it. That's all the councillors must have your cameras on to be deemed as though you're present. Okay, so today we have two items to discuss for workshop. We have item number 3.1, the Adelaide City Development Plan to the Planning and Design Code. We have Michelle English. Michelle, if I can see you. Yes, hello. If you'd like to take the item to discuss it, is there anything that you would like to add to it?
Yes, so we thought tonight would be a really good opportunity for Rick and Maddie to present to council a number of the changes that have occurred as part of the code amendments and the state planning reform. And also for council members to ask whether they have got any questions in relation to the new zoning that has been in place as a result of those reforms. So they, they know exactly which slides they're going to speak to, so I might hand it over to them. I'm sorry, just importantly, one of the reasons for this presentation is to bring this back to council, have it before of mind, because we will be bringing a report into council shortly, so that you understand what the number of code amendments that are initiated by the state government, but also that perhaps the city council would be leading or undertaking jointly with other bodies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Sorry, it's really weird doing this way. Thank you, Gary.
It is, yep. So me and Maddie will share the slides in a moment. But just to, while we're waiting for slides, I can get started. Yeah, as Cheryl said, this is to give you a fairly high level overview of the code, which was introduced in March this year, particularly at the zoning level tonight. With the code being introduced in March and replacing the development plan, which has been in place in the planning system for around 30 years, so a significant change has occurred. How are you going with this slide, Maddie?
Hi Maddie, you were just sharing the Zoom screen before, so would you like me to, have you got the? I've just unmuted Maddie, my apologies, just a minute, bit clunky. You should get on mute now, Maddie. No?
Yep. Sorry, I was, I did have it on my screen, so let me try again.
Thanks Maddie, I think you can probably go to slide five, or sorry, the second slide. Just very quickly, the second slide, so, so as we show, this is really the key question tonight, and key thing we're asking members is, do you have any questions about the zoning changes implemented through the code? So if we can go to maybe slide, move to slide five. Maddie? So before going into the code itself, thought it's helpful to give a reminder and some of the context around the forming of the code, which has been as a result of the planning reform process that has been undertaken since 2012 across South Australia. So this slide really gives you a summary of the key steps in the forming of the slide. So if we start way back in 2012, when the expert panel was established by the state government, this panel being in response to views that the planning system had become rather complex, cumbersome and difficult to navigate, and that the community had really lost faith in the system of planning in South Australia. And I'm really charged with advising on creating an effective and efficient planning system for the state. After the panel was formed, really over the next, from 2012 to 2016, they led a series of investigations and reports through a large process of community and stakeholder engagement. This then resulted in 2016, she'll be aware, the passing of the Planning Development and Infrastructure Act, which has now replaced the Development Act. And that, the PDI Act really set up the framework for the code, the code that has been introduced. And particularly moving from 68 individual development plans to a single statewide planning and design code. And 2017, we saw the creation of the State Planning Commission, who were established to be the principal body, planning body in the state. And the commissions are the ones that have led the creation of the code in South Australia. Then from 2018 to 21 has really been the process which members would be aware of and recall, where there's been a number of discussion papers, drafts and opportunities to be involved in the engagement and consultation process, which has led to, we have now, which was introduced on the 19th of March, being the new planning and design code introduced for the city of Adelaide. At the same time as the code is introduced, the, across the state has been the introduction of the new electronic lodgment system for application, application lodgment and application processing. So all introduced at the same time. So that gives a bit of context of where the code has come from. If I now pass over to Maddie to work through the new zones in the planning and design code. So over to you, Maddie.
Thanks, Rick. I might just add to the electronic planning system. What I'm about to show you is available to everyone. So an improvement is that you can now go into the South Australian Property and Planning Atlas or SAPA, type in your address and click on your property and find out what zone, subzone and overlay apply to you. There's also a tool within the new centralized online portal, where you can again type in your address, you could even type in what development type you are looking for, and it will spit out the policies that might apply to you. So that is making it a bit easier, so a vast improvement with an electronic system. Getting into some of the detail, this map here shows you North Adelaide under the revoked now development plan. So in the blue, we had the North Adelaide Historic Conservation Zone, orange were our Main Street Zones, that's Melbourne East and O'Connell Street. In the pink, we've got the mixed-use Melbourne West Zone and of course the Parkland Zone. So without going into the detail of what those zones were, I will show you some of the changes. So this is the new zoning under the Planning and Design Code. So the North Adelaide Historic Conservation Zone has been replaced with the City Living Zone. The City Living Zone is a zone that is unique to the city of Adelaide. We previously used it in our southern residential areas of the CBD district. It's now applying to that North Adelaide area, all except, you will note, if you can see my cursor, the yellow section. This was previously within the North Adelaide Historic Conservation Zone. It was the Women's and Children's Policy Area. This has been changed to the Community Facility Zone. I will show you in the next slide. It also has a subzone relating to the Women's and Children's Hospital. We've also got the City Main Street Zones again for O'Connell Street and Melbourne Street East. And those are two zones, sorry, one zone that is also unique to the city. Basically, any zone that says city in front of it, you can assume that that is unique to the city of Adelaide. We've also got for Melbourne West, that has been changed to the Business Neighbourhood Zone. So that is a zone that applies in other areas of the state. So I have had a bit of a look at that, so that sort of, to give you an idea of what it is, is Panham Road, some areas of Kent Town, King William Road, Unley. But we do have a subzone to bring a bit more of a unique perspective to that area. So it's actually not too big of a change to the former policy. It is still sort of looking for consulting rooms and office in that medical focus, mixed in with some residential. And then of course, we have the Adelaide Parklands Zone. That previously had a number of policy areas. They have all been removed. So we just have one Adelaide Parkland Zone. But what has been included is the five squares, which is something that the city of Adelaide asked for. Now if we go into subzones, so it's important to understand the hierarchy of the planning and design code policy. So under the former system, you might be familiar with, so the policy areas were the paramount policy. Then you looked at the zone and then you would look at the council-wide policies. In the new planning and design code, it actually goes overlays. It then goes subzones, zones, and then you've got what we're calling general development policies. So the subzones for the North Adelaide area, which just to reiterate, are sit higher than the zone, which is the slide I just went through. So for O'Connell Street and Melbourne Street East, you've got the City High Street Subzone. So that subzone, really talking about a shopping area, supporting day and evening economies, mixed in with a little bit of residential, active streets, intimate public realm. That's what those, that subzone is seeking. You've also got the, so North Adelaide, as the residential prominent area, is covered by a subzone called the North Adelaide Low Intensity Subzone. So we have sort of lost the unique policy areas. They are captured in some way in the overlay, which I'll go through in the next slide. As I mentioned previously, the Women's and Children's Hospital has its own subzone. And you'll see here, just this portion here in the dark purple, that is the medium-high intensity subzone. Medium intensity being defined as between three to six building levels. That's actually no different to what was there previously. And then as I said, the overlays are paramount. So this is the historic area overlay. So whilst we had the former North Adelaide Historic Conservation Zone, so that zone did have a lot of heritage-type policies within the zone. It is, the heritage matters are now dealt with in the overlay. And therefore, in an assessment, they are paramount. They need to be assessed sort of as number one. So that is showing you the area that that would apply to. It's no different from the development plan. Interestingly, even though the Women's and Children's and Memorial Hospital area has been changed to the Community Facility Zones, you will note that historic area overlay will still apply to that. Now if we move into the main central area of the city of Adelaide. There's a lot of colours in here, but in a nutshell, there's not been a great deal of change. So we've got the Riverbank Zone in grey. And that had some subzones under it. We also had institutional zones. We've also got one down here, which was St Andrews. Yellow is our capital city zone, which previously had two policy areas. And then we've got the City Frame Zone. The City Living Zone, the green is where it previously applied and there's been no change there whatsoever. And then some acknowledgement of some of our core Main Streets, so Stur, Halifax and Hut all had their own zonings. And of course, the Parklands. And the Adelaide Historic Conservation Zone in purple here. So the changes in the planning design code is that our institutional zones have been removed. So the City Riverbank Zone now extends the entire way across. They do have subzones and the intent of the subzones is not really changing the previous intent. So whilst it is a change, it's actually not that much of a policy change. The other change is that we've lost the city frame as a zone, but it's become a subzone, which you will soon see. And also it extends along this area of South Terrace here, which is a change, which used to be the City Living Zone, but that's something that council asked for. This section of South Terrace previously was quite high-scale, sought active ground floors and was actually quite different to the rest of the City Living Zone. So that's something that we asked to change to the Capital City Zone. And then of course, we've got the Parklands, which include all of the squares. The subzones, as I mentioned, we've got quite a few through here. So the red is the Health Subzone and we've got the Entertainment Subzone here, that's no change to previously. These are the areas that were previously our institutional zones and have been changed into our Riverbank Zone. This is the cultural institutions subzone and the innovation subzone. The innovation subzone is sort of Lot 14 area and was sort of going through a development plan amendment process at the same time as the code being formulated. But we've also got various subzones to acknowledge some of the differences and uniqueness of some of our Main Streets. So we've got Rundle Mall, Rundle Street, Hynley Street, but this extends a little bit further than it previously did. We've got Good Year and Growth. And then our City Living Zone has been broken into a couple of subzones. So you've got medium to high intensity. So as I mentioned, medium meaning three to six building levels, high above six. And we've got our East Terrace Subzone. St Andrews Hospital is also within the Community Facility Zone and has its own subzone. The Community Facility Zone applies across the state, but interestingly, it only has three subzones. And the Women's and Children's and Memorial Hospital Precinct and the St Andrews Hospital Precinct are two of those that have been recognised as being a little bit different. And then we've got the Historic Area Overlay. And of course, that applies to our former historic area within our City Living area. So there's been no change to those boundaries either. So just to summarise, that's quite a lot of information. The city of Adelaide's been recognised through the Planning and Design Code as unique, maintaining several of its own unique zones. I didn't really touch on height, but there hasn't been any changes through the transition to the Planning and Design Code. The Adelaide Parkland Zone now includes the squares, which is what council had requested. The City Riverbank Zone extends the entire length of the River Torrens. We have lost the City Frame Subzone, but I don't see that as any loss because it's still covered in the Capital City Zone. And the City Living Zone now applies to North Adelaide residential areas with the Historic Area Overlay. So that is just a change of language to get used to. What needs further investigation, I suppose, is that the desired character statements and the statements of historic character, which sat within the North Adelaide Historic Conservation Zone, have predominantly been lost from the new format of the Planning and Design Code. The Historic Area Overlay does attach to historic statements, which we're trying to, I guess, describe the statement of historic character. However, there was quite a loss of the content of that, so we do need to investigate whether they are working. I'll now pass back to Rick.
That's me. Thanks Maddie. And maybe just another comment in terms of some of the detail within the zones in the code. That is, when we bring a report into committee, we will include with that report our analysis of, I guess, all the components of council submission and what has been carried across into the code and what hasn't. And it's our initial analysis on whether we need to continue to, to look at pushing for inclusion of those aspects or whether they might be okay because of the other changes in the code. So that will come to you in the next, in the report. But if I can just briefly, by finishing his talk with the introduction of the code. Council does have the opportunity to continue to play a role in planning for growth and change within the city. And we'll have the opportunity to either lead and identify areas for further policy improvement in the code. So since the code has gone live, we have been reviewing the code against our submissions on the draft code, reviewing against a number of submissions we made on discussion papers released by the commission that identified areas for future review of the code. And we've also then been, I guess, learning as we've been applying the code over the last three to four months in terms of the applications that have come in for assessment. And really what that, what that means is, and I'll summarise this on the next few slides, is a recommended future approach for councils' involvement in development policy moving forward. Sorry, Maddie, can you maybe just go back to the previous slide? And so based on this review, there's four areas and four really broad themes that we would recommend as priority areas to, to continue to look at policy improvements. How those improvements will be progressed, we still need to determine. As council will need to likely work with other bodies to pursue changes, because those policies will likely apply more broadly than just the city of Adelaide. So that's an important point of difference between the old system and the new system with the change from a council development plan to a statewide code, is that we may need to look at differently how we work to pursue amendments. Briefly, those four areas of priority we see is around sustainability, given the significant and long-term impact decisions for development have with new buildings and development on our environment. Movement, really identified as policies in this space have not been reviewed for, for a good number of years, including when some recent zoning changes have been made. Livability, to really ensure that policy support our growing population in a way that contributes positively to the quality of life and quality experience of life for, for our residents. And then heritage is the recommendations from the reform process and the parliamentary review undertaken a number of years ago, have really only been touched upon, I would say, in the rollout of the code. So we see that is an important area moving forward. And council, in recently adopting its heritage strategy, had set a pathway for us to look at that moving, moving forward. So Maddie, next slide, thanks. So what that looks like in terms of, I guess, actions that council may see over the next, next year. And this slide here, I've tried to summarise a number of amendments that we're expecting to see that'll be statewide amendments or apply broadly across different parts of the state. And I'm trying to outline here what we see as an estimated timeline for those pieces of work. The first two lines on the page, local design review and flooding, really about quite specific items. The third, fourth and fifth item, the long-named miscellaneous technical amendments or enhancements, the biannual call-out and additional code matters. I would add summarise all around the efficiency and effectiveness of the operation of the code, some of those being matters that relate to the transition that will need some change over time. Not necessarily about major policy change, but work that will continue to, the team would be, continue to be involved in and might be opportunities to pick up some items that may not have been included in the code that we would continue to like to be included. Maddie, next, next page. And then moving to, there'll also be two at the moment, specific amendments that we're aware of that would relate to the city, the city of Adelaide. First being the City Riverbank Zone, which I'll talk to further in a moment. The second being the potential progressing of the state heritage area for the Parklands and city layout. That I'd say is tentative, is still work being undertaken, but I think there's an intent to progress that work based on a recommendation of the SA Heritage Council that that area does meet the criteria for state listing. And then the last part in the work plan below, which is that area below the dotted line and the two lines there, is progressing the key, the four key development priority areas that just outlined earlier, as well as the opportunity for council to look into involvement in regional planning. This is a new, a new aspect of the planning system and there will be, there is a requirement for regional plans across the whole state. Won't talk in too detail that now, what we will be recommending in the report that comes into committee is do some further work identifying the opportunities for council to participate in, in this area of the planning system. So that will be another piece of work for the coming year. And lastly, just, we're just quickly in relation to the Riverbank Precinct and a code amendment that has been initiated by the state government. So through the Department of Planning or through the Attorney General's Department. So council members were, there was an E News provided recently to members that we received a letter, or council received a letter on the 7th of July notifying that the minister had approved a proposal to look at a code amendment for the Riverbank Precinct. At this point, just to let you know, at this point, we don't, we don't have any further information on the content of that amendment. But we will let members know, so once, once we do have that information and share that. What we do know is that there will be an opportunity for council to participate and have an opportunity to comment on that and then when it is released for consultation, but we will keep you informed as that occurs. And so just last, last but before question, so just confirming, so we are looking towards a report to committee on the 3rd of August into council then after that. And then on the amendments, there will certainly be a, a report on the Riverbank Code Amendment plus others that are in that work plan that you can expect to see over the coming year. So I think last, it's really over to questions now.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Yes, so we're open to the floor questions, so please members remember to use your virtual hand. Councillor Canall? Councillor Canall, Jenny, can we unmute Councillor Canall?
Sorry, I thought I'd sent the request. I'll try again. Councillor Canall? We've, there we go.
I didn't take my hand up. So give me again, or I can do that.
So Lord Mayor.
Yes.
Oh, you didn't have your hand up, Councillor Canall? No, okay, Lord Mayor, sorry.
Thank you, sorry. Just a few questions, Rick and Maddie, thank you for that presentation. I'm just keen to understand whether the heritage overlays. So, so we've got heritage overlays, but in North Adelaide, if you look at the plans, it's got the Main Streets called out. Do the heritage overlays overlay onto the Main Streets in North Adelaide as well as the residential areas?
Oh, thank you, Lord Mayor. No, they don't. And that's the same as previously under the development plan. So O'Connell Street and Melbourne Street were in Main Street Zone. They weren't covered by a Historic Conservation Zone. They are however covered by other overlays. So if there's specific local heritage places or state heritage places, there's different overlays which would apply to those properties and properties adjacent those places.
Okay, all right, that's good to understand. And also in terms of, I note that there's a subzone for the St Andrews Hospital, but there's no subzone that I could see around Calvary, the new Calvary on Angus?
Yeah, excellent. We did sort of suggest that if you're going to call out some hospitals in the city of Adelaide, why not do them all? But the State Planning Commission just disagreed and thought that it could be adequately covered by the Capital City Zone. So that's what's Um but the the State Planning Commission just disagreed and thought that it could be adequately covered by the capital city zone, so that's what zone it's remained in.
Yeah, um and I guess this is sort of where I'm just trying to uh really understand. Uh and so thank you for calling some of it out, but just to get a really clear understanding of what's been gained, if anything. By the, by by what we have now and what's been lost. So as you said, there there's a few things that are no longer called out in the way that we would call it out, particularly around chara- uh character statements. And uh in heritage, but I'm just sort of really keen to understand whether um there are. Um things that we've also gained by the new uh planning code. Um. And the, I guess the main thing I've just need to step through in my head is the conservation zones and how the overlays work. Um particularly in those those areas.
Sure, okay, in terms of the first question about what we have gained, um we can certainly come back to you with um detail on on everything. But I think what's really important to recognize is that the city of Adelaide has been recognized as unique, which is huge. Um a a lot of suburban councils have all um received very similar zoning, so they have lost a lot of local content. Um we have maintained most of our local content, so that is significant. Um I would say that that would be the biggest gain, but in terms of gains and losses, it is hard to answer. Because really the transition to the planning and design code wasn't really putting in any new policies. It was really a transition across and we've landed pretty well in the state. In terms of your other question about the overlays, um so um go back to the hierarchy of if something comes in for an assessment. Um there is a hierarchy of how policies need to be used in an assessment. So uh the hierarchy sits at overlays are paramount and that's where heritage sits underneath that is subzones. So if you're looking in um North Adelaide, um the whole of the residential area is covered by um specific subzones. As well as those main streets, they do have their own subzones um to call out some of their unique qualities. Uh below that again are uh zones and then below that again is general development policies. So that's how you would work through an assessment. Um the the heritage overlays would be your first point to make sure that they've sort of ticked all of that. Then you go to the subzone, the zone, um and then the general development policies, is that um answering that question?
Other understanding the hierarchy is very handy. Um also, can you just tell me why they've called out Gooja Grove as a subzone?
So that was previously a policy area within the capital city zone, um so that's the reason.
So they've.
That's with that one, okay. Just, yeah.
And just um for members, um I uh so we've also sort of been working, the team's been working very hard. And we've been working with attorney generals to try and address the North Adelaide D P A, the institutional D P A. Um so there has been some shift, so um for, by way of background. Uh the original intent and it was, took several years going through council was to contain. Uh the D P A amendment to within the boundary of the institution itself. Um there was a, let's say, a last minute change before it went through um that put in the words uh as. Associated with, um which then basically allowed if somebody, say, for instance, um. Calvary bought a a property three streets away on a block that the same D P A would apply to the property that they bought there. Um we've managed through this process to bring that back one step to adjacent to. And my understanding at this point, even though it hasn't been tested, is the adjacent to is only the adjoining property. And not the property adjoining the adjoining property, um which is a a great step in the right direction. Um we're still working hard to pull it back to the original intent, which was within the boundary of the institution. Um so uh at this point, um. Uh that means that there are still some properties that have been bought by the institutions, which. Uh would look to a different development, is that correct, Rick?
Um yeah, what you've explained is correct in terms of council's original position being within sites. Through various iterations, it's expanded but come back to some degree, so if what you've explained is correct.
Yeah, so I had hoped that it would come right back, um but we've sort of got halfway and I'll um.
Yeah.
Continue to work on trying to pull it back again, but all right, so um thank you, that was a really good presentation. I just need to understand some of uh some of the uh overlays and the subsigns.
Thank you, uh Lord Mayor, um I, we had councillor Moran, but with a hand up, but she's no longer there. So anyone else have any questions? Anything they'd like to discuss further? I'll move on to the next item if there isn't any. And because we're virtual, it's a bit, everything's moving a bit slow, so just double checking, no other questions? Okay, great, thank you, we'll move on. Um I'll move on to item three point two, we have the Adelaide Town Hall, civic areas and members accommodation. We have Clinton, I see Clinton, yes, there he is, um Clinton, do you want to open up? A discussion on this one?
Thank you, Chair, um thank you, members, good evening. I just want to introduce uh the staff that will be presenting to you tonight. Um we've got Jeff Norris, our manager of infrastructure planning, and Nico Bormus, our Buildings Asset Manager. Recently, council asked us to reinvestigate plans that were developed back in two thousand and seventeen. For the reconfiguration of the members accommodation and and that's the reason we're here tonight um to workshop with you. Uh Jeff, Nico and the teams have reviewed those opportunities prepared back in two thousand and seventeen. And will talk through the possibilities to increase accessibility, um change more contemporary office space. And some improvements to D D A compliance that could be possible, and we're obviously seeking your feedback uh on on those items. Um as these works vary in level of intervention, um we will bring a report um back to council later in the year. Which will incorporate um council members' views and feedback from tonight. And also detail the implications um and cost to implement the changes and also the approaches available to council. To uh to accommodate any changes you may require. So I'll pass now to um Jeff and Nico to run through the uh the short presentation.
Thank you. We forgot starting.
Jenny, you have.
Sorry, yep.
None of you there, Jenny?
Uh sorry, I know you're right to share the presentation, Nico, I've unmuted, I've asked you to unmute, yep, so you can share now.
Ah, thank you, I'll uh share the screen. Great, uh can we all see that?
Yeah.
Ah, excellent.
So thanks, uh Clint, so tonight is really an opportunity for us to hear the members' views around. And ideas around how those civic and members spaces could be used within the, than the town hall and what opportunities that might offer. As Clint mentioned, the intent would be for us then to um those ideas away. Work through what uh what's required to implement the different options, bring that back to council with further consideration. Uh I'll get Nico, who has a lot of knowledge around the town hall and a lot of understanding about its spaces, to run through the short presentation. Uh we've got a few questions in there to prompt some discussion, but certainly keen to hear the council's views and ideas around the spaces. So I'll hand over to Nico to run through the presentation.
Uh, thank you. Um yeah, so essentially in the twenty seventeen, there was uh some concepts developed. Uh that looked at maximizing some of the spaces, uh this has been put into some future, future planning. Uh but I guess right now it's a really good opportunity to get get some new thoughts and ideas onto onto those comments and sort of start fresh. Um we did meet with the Civic Recognition Working Group and they they had uh several questions. Uh around the concept, so I guess the the first thought was to go back to our council members and and seek some feedback. Uh now I thought I'd um sort of start off just by talking a little bit about the community, community land management plan. Um and this is the sort of document that sets the scene and objectives for the for the space in particular. Uh uh obviously, it's all, it's all, this is very high level, but just uh talking about preserving uh some of the heritage character of the building. Uh and being the seat of governance for council, um. Uh being the focal point, focal point for Adelaide, uh and uh ensuring that commercial use of the town hall facilities be restricted. Uh and also encouraging public uh engagement, um so I think the main sort of point to bring across is that. Uh sort of any sort of changes might be an amendment to the uh Community Land Management Plan or um or the like. Uh now, uh we thought we'd just highlight uh the building as a whole, so the um the function center. Uh sorry, uh the function center on level one and two and there's the civic areas. Uh we're going to be focusing today's workshop on the two areas being the eagle chambers, uh members offices and. Uh and the members lounge area here, uh but we're happy to take on any considerations or ideas that that. There may come up from today's, today's meeting. Uh so some of the key questions that were brought up uh in the Civic Recognition Working Group. Uh were what are council's members' views on the facility, the facilities required to operate and function? Uh what are council's members' views on changing the council members' areas to improve the experience in town hall? And what are council's members' views on increasing the public access to the town hall? Uh now we'll get back to that at the end of the uh the slides. Here, and I'm just talking about the implications, uh as a result of this meeting, uh there, uh so this workshop, there aren't any implications. But I just thought I'd highlight the uh the policy implications uh here that that may result from any changes to the town hall. Um and that goes for for budget allocations as well. Uh these, these are the areas that we spoke about, so you can see on the left hand side where the uh this, our council offices are. Uh leading into the uh admin areas as well, and on the right hand side are the lounge spaces and the. Uh the two meeting rooms and uh clo- cloaking room, et cetera. Uh now some observations that have been made uh in the past, uh uh essentially just in the members' staff offices, uh the use of shared. Uh shared rooms and uh just general poor amenities being toilets and um. Uh poor function in kitchen and breakout areas, uh and the members lounge, it's quite un- underutilized. And there are some significant heritage pieces that um that aren't really showcased to the to the public. Uh and that quite dated eighties amenities as well. Uh now some opportunities that have been highlighted are to to utilize the members' area. Uh in a different way to enable greater public access. Uh a possible open plan council offices with breakout areas to enable information sharing. Uh designated meeting rooms for private discussions. And uh improved toilet facilities and also security to the uh building itself and a a potential. Uh improvement to their concierge desk and improved catering facilities. Uh this could lead to the, an improved customer service, uh more modern bit out. Taking into consideration the heritage, uh increased public access uh to the town hall. Uh support other event spaces in the in the function area, uh in the in the ground floor area. Uh enabling new public meeting zones uh and resolving some significant D D A issues that the building currently has. Uh and also showcasing Adelaide Town Hall and the city of Adelaide. Uh I guess the next steps from this workshop is uh to, that will obtain. Uh the feedback as we, as we mentioned and work that through the civic work, uh civic recognition working group. And also creating a holistic uh a holistic report of the town hall, taking into consideration the. Uh the town hall function areas, civic rooms and civic areas. And talk about the future planning and budgets, uh and that will be presented to council. Uh so yeah, that's the end of the slide presentation, so we can step into the key questions.
Thank you, Nico, um I have councillor Hyde, yes, it can't. Go ahead councillor Hyde.
Thank you, um just keep it brief, uh yes, I think the members lounge presents a a massive opportunity. Um to do something different and I think we should uh absolutely explore that. Um I think if you look at the members lounge as a whole, um with some minor changes, um could provide a good space. And and considering it has, also it has its own entrance and its own foyer um as well, which I've never known to be used at all. Um my time, so uh it's quite versatile in that sense and could provide an exhibition space. Um whether it's for short term events or even even as a um. As a sala, as a sala venue or a fringe, uh you could put a small fringe show in there. Or um uh you could put actually some of our um massive historical archival collection. Um on display there, obviously you've got Colonel Wyatt's table in there. Um have you, so those are the opportunities there. Uh regarding the the Queen Adelaide Room, um just a, just a question to the administration, what was the cost? Of that rather stylish and august revamp, what was the cost of that?
Uh would that be to you, Nico, would you know the the um cost of that?
I should. Uh from, it it was a while back, it wasn't too involved, I believe it was around us, the seven hundred K mark. But I'll have to uh have to get that numbers uh checked out, so I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Yep, um yeah, so just just regarding regarding the Queen Adelaide Room. Um I realize this isn't a, isn't a consensus view necessarily, but um I I don't see any reason why the Queen Adelaide Room. Uh is is that much more special than um the auditorium, which is just above it. Um I think, you know, it's included in the civic areas, I think it should be available. Um for hire and also for hire from the community as well. Um one thing that I understand happens is that we have a particular grant program. Um where uh community and or not for profits wish to use the auditorium. Um we charge them full hire fees, but uh we also give them a grant which offsets a lot of their fees. Um and that's how community groups um access the town hall. Um I see no reason why that room, especially considering the amount of money that um rate payers money has been spent on it. I don't see why it would need to be closed off to rate payers, um you know, for the vast majority of the time. Um uh and I think it presents an opportunity actually to pay itself off, because there is a lot of interest. Um in that room as well, regarding councillors' offices. Um uh I I note as well that the deputy lord mayor technically has an office in the lord mayor's suite, which. I've never known deputies or men to use it, but we can't afford, but um I I'm not necessarily opposed to open plan offices or something like that. Of what it's worth, in any case, uh the current arrangement um not really that good. And the, those rooms could actually be used for something um much better. Um with a community purpose as well from, as I, as I see it.
Thank you councillor, I just want to add, uh the acting CEO, I just wanted to want to know that it was eight hundred. Um thousand for the renovation of the Queen Adelaide Room. Um uh councillor Abraham today?
Thank you, Chair, um uh just just very uh quickly, uh um members lounge. I um I agree with what councillor Hart was saying about creating a a multipurpose sort of room, whether it is for. Uh exhibitions or a gallery or even a whole museum to sort of promote. Um uh the the city of Adelaide or the city's heritage or or history. Uh that would be um, that would be good. And the other one I wanted to make a note of is councillors' offices and I um I note that you. Uh that administration had um talked about um uh open plan offices and that's something that I would endorse. Uh if if we can have some quiet rooms and meeting rooms. If, if we can have some quiet rooms and meeting rooms close by. So that if you are meeting with members of administration or someone else, that you're able to, to have those meetings. Besides that, the Queen Adelaide Room, I'm, I'm open to, to suggestions. So I, I think it would be good for. For, for that room to, to see more members of the community. But, but in saying that I'll be, I'll, I'll be keen to see that room possibly. Get more used by, say, organisations that we have strategic partnerships with or something like that. But, but beyond that, I'm, I'm happy to, to see some ideas and, and for us to explore it further. I don't really have any strong. Opinions on that at this stage.
Thank you councillor, councillor Martin. Just one moment councillor Martin, we have an unmuted you. Just one moment.
Okay.
Please go ahead now?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Look, a question for the administration. Am, am I discerning that you have abandoned the 2017? Plan which was to spend what was then identified as seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand dollars. On the members' room and the elected members' offices. That's, that's now gone by the way. Is that correct?
Nico?
Hello, yeah. No, no, not, not from, from our point of view. I think it's just more today to. To get a discussion happening so that we can kind of add to. And I'm happy to share that, happy to share the, the previous cost. So the, the previous concepts as well that have been, actually we got them costed out as well. So. Happy to share that out after this, after this meeting.
Yeah, look, that'd be really good if you could do that. Just a few comments. I, look, I'm opposed to the 2017 plan. That involved considerable expense. And indeed, I'm against any expenditure on facilities for members. For this council, which has, in my view, severe financial problems. We have other priorities to which we could direct such money. My feeling is that the needs of councillors can be accommodated in the Colonel Light Centre. Now, this hasn't been discussed before, but I'm of the view that there is plenty of space. We have many floors which are underutilized, following the redundancy of hundreds of staff last year. Why not move councillors there so that they're closer to the heart of the organisation? And at, at the same time, and I know that the administration is happy to consider things outside of the square. At the same. The staff rather than the ceremonial heritage part of, of town hall. And especially as we're looking to appoint a new CEO at this time, this is an ideal juncture to consider that. And then I think also we ought to consider moving as. In that scenario, you'd have the councillors and the CEO over there, the Lord Mayor's office as well. And that would actually involve little costs because those facilities are over there. They are ready enough for our staff, therefore they're ready enough for elected members. And that would free up those, those spaces in, in the town hall. Now, you know, just looking at, say, the Lord Mayor's office, CEO's office, which, you know, probably is big as the Queen Adelaide Room. And then you take the members offices, you're looking at three, four times the size of the Queen Adelaide Room. And, and those spaces, if you use the meetings if necessary, without any additional cost. And then we could look, and we're thinking laterally here, then we could look at maybe. Opening up areas that have been vacated by councillors, the Lord Mayor, the CEO. For other activities. Now, and I say to the administration, we may have to revisit the community land management plan. But I know you're open to anything that's proposed. Maybe we can look at, at using things like eagle chambers, which used to be lawyers' offices. As lawyers' offices. Why couldn't we lease that property, which is first grade property in the city of Adelaide or something like that? And then we could look at, say, the Queen Adelaide Room. And I share the view of other councillors that we could open up to the public. Now, for example, we have weddings in the town hall upstairs. And it is a large space, but we have a smaller space that could host weddings downstairs in the Queen Adelaide Room. It has a fully functional commercial kitchen, which honestly, I cannot remember the last time in this term of council. That a meal was cooked in there. That would be ideal. Additionally, you could open up for hire or, or even consider the possibility of it hosting dinners by a commercial operator. Or, or even dare I say something like a restaurant. And the members' room, if we think laterally about it, it is an excellent space that any commercial operator would be interested in. As councillor Hyde observed, it has its own foyer and entry point. It could serve as a bar. And it did. It was a bar. That was the bar and the reception area for the Albert Hotel going back. Quite some time before council purchased the property. And, you know, this, this idea that we can't allow commercial activity, I think is wrong. The Queen Adelaide Room, for example, that was a commercial hub. It was in fact the home of the first Adelaide Stock Exchange. And, and we used to lease it to the forerunner of Saipole as a weekend police station. So. All of these offices could be considered for revenue generating purposes. For a council that is struggling financially as a means of bolstering our bottom line. But also making use of those offices which have been vacated in the tower, in the Colonel Light Centre. Now, I think that's lateral thinking. I'd like the administration to take that sort of stuff on board. And come back with some, you know, some clear, different thinking so that we can address these things. But I don't want to spend three quarters of a million dollars. Or even two hundred thousand dollars on offices. When we're not even putting enough money aside to look after the aquatic centre. I think that would be a, a really unjust thing to do.
Thanks councillor Martin. I have councillor Moran left, come back. Now you're back again. Are you here? Yes, oh, there you are. Councillor Moran, I think just wait for Jenny to unmute you.
I've unmuted myself.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, my, my phone and my iPad keep dying. That's the parlous situation of council communication. Look, I couldn't hear everything Phil said, but as we discussed it before. I'm happy to vacate the historic town hall, but I think rather than just boot the councillors out. To open plan offices in the very empty Colonel Light Centre. I think it would be good if we all went to the Colonel Light Centre. It's empty, it's modern and turn the council chat, the council, except the council chamber. I think we should still have meetings there. But there's no reason why we can't, the Lord Mayor, the CEO, CEO to be close to her staff, the Lord Mayor to be close to her councillors. It's crazy to separate this Lord Mayor and the councillors. We're separated enough. It's crazy to separate the CEO and her staff. We did have a situation before where the CEO went into the Colonel Light Centre. So if we're going to do it, let's do it properly. I'm not sure about the philosophy of open plan offices. It's been proven that that doesn't help with collegiate behaviour. And I think that is a, a very hollow hope for this council. So if we're going to do it, let's not spend any money. But let's leave the town hall. It's, his hot, historic use hasn't always been as such. The Queen Adelaide Room was the old stock exchange and the chambers were legal officers. So I see no problem, but I don't think that we should just banish, not, not banish, but send the councillors. Take away all their offices and their lounges and then leave the CEO and the Lord Mayor swanning around in the old building. I think if we're going to go, we all go and we then look at uses for the town hall for the community. So I have no problem with that at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Abraham today, you've got your hand up again. Did you want to say something again? Yes, can you? Can you unmute yourself or? Yep, there you go.
Oh, yes, thank you. I've, I've got a question for administration and maybe they can. Give us the answer at the end when they're wrapping up. But in terms of the next steps. Do we have any timeframes on when that report will come back to us and when we'll know? I guess, yeah, what the next steps would, would look like. So, yeah, is that something that they're able to go through?
Through the chair, I can, I can start that answer and maybe Nico can add a little bit of further detail. Whatever we do. Again, in terms of feedback tonight, we obviously need to go away and do some work. There are some fresh ideas that have been. Raised tonight, which I don't think have been previously investigated. So we may need to do a bit of work on that. Anything that we do do, we do need to refer back to the civic recognition working group. We do have a civic action plan. That is managed by that group that sets the plan for the next ten or so years for how we manage the civic areas. So. There would be a little bit of work to do to, to, I guess, readdress some of those plans. Notwithstanding that, I think it would be in the next few months councillor, would probably be the timeframe we'd be looking at. Given that councillor have asked us to go away and investigate, I'd like to come back with something, certainly in the next couple of months for consideration. But it would have to go through that process. So just mindful of that.
I had, I believe Helen Donovan, so councillor Donovan, sorry. And then the Lord Mayor and then councillor Martin. Can you see? There you go. I can't hear you.
Councillor Donovan, yeah, I've, I've unmuted that one. Yep. Thank you. Sorry, it's not working on the screen, only working on the phone. Yeah, so just in brief, I would say great idea to look at alternate uses generally. Because a lot of the spaces are underutilized. I would say it would be completely pointless to look at open plan offices. The type of work that we do, reading three hundred page documents and having private conversations with constituents and. And, and with staff is not at all suited to open plan offices. So that would be, I'm sure, just a, a matter of putting something else in that would be underutilized. But I can certainly see that there's lots of spaces that could be reconsidered. To look at other ways and, and particularly in the members lounge, all of those historic buildings. To the right as you enter, I think very rarely are used. So of course, the tricky thing is that when we're all in there on a Tuesday in particular. Then a lot of those spaces do get ad hoc usage if we are having meetings. So the challenge would be to have spaces that are available. On certain days with high volume, but then probably a free most other days, which I'm sure has all been well considered in the past. But I'd certainly put the kibosh on any idea of open plan offices. Because that is, research shows is, does not work for the type of work that we need to be doing.
Thank you councillor Donovan. Lord Mayor?
Good, thank you. Look, I'm, I'm really, have been very keen to hear everybody's ideas. I think I'm probably the only one that has actually had offices in the Colonel Light Building as well as a members' office, as well as. Being in the office that I'm currently in. And I, you know, have been as comfortable in all of those spaces because it's about the work we do. And the environment. It has been a very, a, a great working environment regardless of which of those areas that I've worked in. I don't agree with renting spaces out to lawyers. I think the intention is to open it up to the public. And if we're going to open up to the public. I, I think there's some better purposes that we could use that for. I also would like to get some data on current usage and also demand. I know that from a civics point of view, we did a bit of a capture, given we've had eighteen months of COVID. Just to have a look at how many civic functions we'd had and how many members of the public and who too and who'd been invited and who else. Had used those rooms. So perhaps as a, as a source of information, that information could be distributed to members. As part of the next process. So they have a better understanding of how those rooms are currently utilized outside of the. The Tuesday nights or outside of the, the, the straight civic function. So there's a lot of other. Things that are used or those rooms are utilized for even now. And I think to your point councillor Hyde, the Queen Adelaide Room has been used for many sort of other things, other than just the straight civic function. So perhaps if we can get some information back to you on that. The kitchen downstairs off the Queen Adelaide Room hasn't functioned as a, as a kitchen in terms of where people cook for a very, very long time. Not just in this term of council, but the last term of council and possibly the one before that. Meals were prepared in the commercial kitchens upstairs and brought down on bayonets or, or heating trays. So. There would need to be a fairly significant investment in that room. But if that room, if that kitchen was also catering for. Those other rooms that are currently members rooms or the front, then, then it would make sense of actually revisiting that kitchen. I also agree, it would be great. The only time that people can see, for instance, the beautiful table that Colonel Light did, the plans of Adelaide. And some of the memorabilia that's in there. And we have extensive archives. And don't actually have a, a way to show all of, I guess, the history of, of the city of Adelaide as seen through. The town hall and the city council. I think the only time we have that open is, is on the open day, which has only been happening for the last few years and we get. Well in excess of two thousand people every time we do that. So really keen to have a, a look at that and other, other uses. Keen to understand also from administration what of Colonel Light is currently used and, and not. Understanding that we are still under restrictions. So with getting staff back, we're still even. I, I think it's a one and four square meter, but even with the one and two square meter, there had to be a re. Ordering of where, of how staff were interacting on those spaces. I would also like to share with members what I brought back from Christchurch a couple of years ago. They had redone their civic spaces and they did have, the, the Lord Mayor and the CEO were still together, but in normal. Offices as you would find in Colonel Light. But they actually did the members' rooms. They're on the same floor. But they had a lounge, a big sort of board table. And then behind that, they had hot desks and two rooms for private meetings. Plus their own sort of secretariat, if you like, in a small kitchen facility. It was a beautiful space. It was really well utilized. And I'd really like to share those plans with members and some photographs so they can have an understanding of what. A, a combination of open space and private space might look like to see whether members find that helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Now I'm going to go to councillor Noel, Noel. And then to councillor Martin and then to councillor Hyde.
Myself off. Just, I'm intrigued because the, the question of the, the various rooms is a very mixed one and that's. It's one, it's not just those rooms which aren't large. It's also, I have to say, it would, would, you know, us to also look at the other. Rooms where the, the CEOs and, and also the Lord Mayors because if we're going to do something, there has to be a particular, a particular need. So what is it that we think we can do with these areas? I mean, we can use it for, you know, for the historical things and showing items. Using it for, for public areas that we can possibly engage with people. So what need are we, we trying to address? What's amount of space do we need for this, of what we think that will create a use that'll engage with our, our community a lot better? Because it's more about, we can do anything we like with it, but if we're going to spend large sums of money. If we look at one, one room at eight hundred thousand dollars, by the time you, you play with the others, you could be talking a number of millions of dollars. Fixing these rooms up to make them amenable, but you also have to be saying to, for what? So my question is. What sort of, out of the ideas we've placed, what do we do? What is our intention? I mean, if it's about showing it and making. what do we do? What is our intention? I mean, if it's about showing it and making it engaging for people and making it a tourist attraction, that sounds good. Um, how do we, how do we see that? And it is one of those things to show a bit of the character of the city. Uh, and while we're talking about that, I mean, uh, we still have, uh, with our, our council chamber, um, well, how is the security going to work? Um, and things like that to make sure that, I mean, uh, we are a, a, a political entity. Um, to make sure that we have secure areas for ourselves, et cetera. Um, you know, because not everything we discuss is agreed with, uh, is agreeable to everybody. Um, but also during the course of our meetings, et cetera, and even though it's, it's not that frequent, but the, uh, the point is, is that we need spaces to break out in. So how, we have our meeting, you have a break, where do you do that? Um, and so how do you accommodate those things? So it's all the practical aspects, not just about these areas, but, uh, the usage of, uh, the offices and of our, our meeting rooms, et cetera. How do we accommodate those sorts of things? I mean, Queen Adelaide Room, it's, it's very apparent that we can do more things with that and, and why wouldn't you? Because it's a beautiful space and um, if we're not using it, it would be sad to not use it properly. Um, and of course, uh, the functionality, uh, for our meeting rooms, et cetera. Well, we do need private spaces of some, you know, we can have some hot desks and some private spaces and, uh, maybe there's something accommodation in it. And I suppose that we can all be in the, uh, the Colonel Light Building, et cetera. Well, if that's an opportunity to do that. Um, so, but a- again, whatever we're intending to do, uh, I just note that it, it needs to be, we're trying to fulfil a need or, or something that we are trying to accommodate that will, uh, enhance the, the value of, of the building and its use. Um, so, and if we, and if, and if we talk to that from my point of view, then we are, uh, we're looking at it in the way, uh, that we are enhancing the value for our community. And by that, it's, it's, even if it's a, a, you know, for renting it out in some fashion, at least there is a, a financial, uh, return on this and we can look at that as part of this conversation. Because otherwise, we're gonna spend all this money to create something, and I'm not sure, um, uh, if we are going to, you know, it's an investment or it's just an expenditure, and I don't wanna waste money either, um, if we don't need to.
Thank you. Um, councillor Martin?
Yeah, look, just a couple of questions, uh, for the administration, as assuming the task is to, uh, enhance the value and the use of the spaces that are being talked about. Can, can we have, um, some costings as well, uh, accompanying the report? Um, uh, so that, uh, the, the, the no cost or lease cost option that I'm, uh, advancing is costed, uh, a- and, uh, up to the beautiful spaces, uh, that might be created, the costs of that as well. And I wonder if, uh, in that broader consideration of options, whether the administration might talk to other parties, uh, who might be interested in operating the spaces. So for suitability of downstairs, the sort of usage and revenue it might generate. And, and then, uh, if we could also, uh, have a look at whether, you know, some of the, uh, the things that were mentioned by the Lord Mayor, the, the, the use of the two kitchens, how that might work if we were using the Queen Adelaide Room, that would be useful too. And just one last question, if the administration could let us know, um, who, who is this civic working group? Uh, who's on that, please?
Thank you, through the chair. Oh, sorry. Um, through the chair. Um, so the civic recognition group is, um, a, a group that's chaired by the, uh, CEO. It's been in place for quite a number of years now, um, was set up by, I think it was under, uh, Stephen Yarwood's, uh, term, uh, to make sure, um, that the, uh, civic, uh, protocols and any, um, issues or any works in relation to those civic spaces, um, are dealt with respectfully. Um, it's chaired by the CEO and comprises the Lord Mayor, the Deputy Lord Mayor as well.
Oh, so it's just a free view. Okay. Well, look, you know, I, I know all of you would be impacted in a minor or major way by some of the options that are being put on the table. Um, but I, I, I am happy to make myself available, uh, a- and to speak at any meeting that you have, as I'm sure other councillors are too.
Uh, thank you. Um, and I can assure you there's no conflict from my perspective, um, in relation to being able to deal with this matter, um, councillor Martin. So, but thank you.
Except your assurance.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Hyde? Councillor, hi, yeah, thank you.
Um, yeah, look, I'm just, I just wanted to, there are a couple of things that I wanted to pick up on. Um, one was what, uh, Nico said about the old report still being relevant. I'm, I'm not sure whether it is or not, and I'd appreciate some further clarity on it, because my understanding, my limited understanding of that old report is that, um, it was more of a refit and an update of existing uses, whereas the motion specifically talks about alternate uses, um, which may include opening up to the public, a gallery, other public accessible spaces, et cetera, et cetera. So um, uh, can, can we get a little bit of understanding on what was in that original report, which I know the motion also requests, um, that, that report on the investigation is provided to councillors by the end of June, unless it was in E News, I missed, uh, it hasn't gone. Um, uh, so what, what was in that original report and why do we think it's still relevant, even though we're talking about ultimate and completely throwing the Lord Mayor out with the bathwater sort of situations we're talking about here? So I don't see how that previous report could still be relevant.
Uh, through the chair. Uh, I think the best way to answer that councillor is just to come back with that information for you. So happy to, um, circulate. Um, that report as well as the plans, as Nico suggested, you, uh, circulate, and we can give a bit of a rundown of what the council decisions are that we're currently working to. That's probably the best way to manage that, if you're okay with that.
Yes, certainly. I, I, I suppose it's just from my perspective, we've got this motion, um, in front of us that we will pass. I think it was in May. Um, and that's sort of what I'm, uh, well, that's what I'm basing my judgment on. Um, the other thing that I was curious about through you, Chair, um, uh, is the civic recognition working group. Um, now, there's nothing in this report that, uh, suggests that, that the working group should be, uh, steering, um, this work. I would have thought it would be more of a council, like full council led, um, uh, initiative. So, and, and look, I've, when I was Deputy Lord Mayor, I was on the civic recognition working group. You know, I'm not, I'm not suggesting anything untoward or anything like that, but, um, I've actually just tried to find the terms of reference for the group. I can't find the terms of reference. Um, and so I can't even assess whether this is within the purview of it. I imagine, um, much of it is, but we're talking about a broad brush. Like, the civic recognition working group, uh, takes care of the civic spaces in particular, uh, and some other aspects of town hall. This is, uh, this is a broad brush rethink of what, um, much of the town hall is used for. So I just, I just wonder why a relatively narrow, um, and I'm not saying the people on there are narrow, I'm just saying the scope of the working group is relatively narrow. And the motion on my read, I know certainly never contemplated when voting for it, that we would be allowing it to be steered by a, a, a subcommittee of the council and, and staff. So, um, uh, could I just get some advice on that and how that works in practice?
Yeah, I can see your hand up. Um, absolutely. Through the presiding member, um, apologies if I caused confusion. That wasn't to say that all decisions in relation to, um, the use of those civic spaces and anything that might be mooted here tonight would be at the, uh, purview of the civic recognition working group on its own. Um, the, um, standing orders does set out the role, um, of the civic recognition working group. Um, and there are terms of reference associated with that. Um, Jenny, do you have some further information on that, please?
Certainly. Claire, I can read outstanding order two eight five, which says, "All proposals for work or changes to the civic area be considered by the civic recognition working group for chief executive officer determination or a report to and resolution of council where appropriate."
And, and so, so Chair, is that, those civic areas, is that the Lord Mayor's suite and the Queen Adelaide Room? And, well, I don't have the map in front of me, sorry, but those specific, those are the civic areas, am I correct?
Um, it, I don't, yeah, it's best to look at the map. Um, so the map's really clear. Uh, so Nico did have that up earlier as part of the presentation. That sort of shows you what those areas are. Councillor Hyde?
Yeah, yeah, and that, that was my understanding. So the working group only has input on those and is just gonna offer its opinion.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's correct.
You're in, it's not steering the work in, in any sort of way or?
No, no, no.
All right. Good, uh, good. That's just, that's just, um, uh, reprisal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Hyde. Um, anyone else? Councillor Mackey, councillor Hyde? No, councillor Mackey? Anyone else?
Uh, okay, I'd like to add, if I can, since this is a workshop and everyone is giving their thoughts in regards to the town hall space. And I, I said it and I'll say it again, it, it is, um, is a place for the people. Um, I don't believe that the place should be commercialised at all. I don't believe that we should be in direct competition with the businesses that we have out in, out in the city, putting in lawyers, putting in bars, putting in, um, spaces like that. Into the town hall is a big no to me. And, um, and any thought in that way, I would completely disagree with. The whole aim of bringing this motion through is to have, um, a discussion about what we could use this unto, underutilized space in the town hall that is for the people. Um, it's, I requested in bringing in the plan because, um, that was discussed back in two thousand and seventeen. And correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was voted against in because of how much it would have cost. And maybe there's other options that we can do with the council's offices in regards to not spending that much money. But I would like to see, um, the town hall being used, um, for a space where people can come and, um, look at the, well, look at art or the history of the, um, city. We've got Colonel Light's table just sitting there in the back room collecting dust. Um, no one actually sees it. Um, we have a lot of artefacts, we've got a lot of, um, uh, things that we can display to enrich, uh, to show the rich history of the city of Adelaide. And that's who we are. We are a capital city. Um, it is the city of Adelaide and we need to talk about a history and we need to have people to, um, you know, come through and, you know, and school groups, um, you know, come through and, and learn about the history of Adelaide. If we could have a space, uh, in, in the town hall that we can utilise and do that, that's what I would like to see. I don't believe in a commercialising, um, the, um, the, uh, Queen Adelaide Room. I don't believe that we should rent that out. It's a space that we use for civic functions. Um, and, um, I think it should remain that and it should remain as a special place for, for that to happen. Um, I don't also believe in renting out the, um, CEO's office or the Lord Mayor's office. They do a lot of work during the day. Um, they have a lot of meetings and a lot of people that they, um, speak to separately in regards to council matters, um, and constituents. And I think that space is beautiful to welcome them and, uh, and it connects with the town hall. And, um, I think we need to keep some sort of tradition in that way. Um, it's a conversation that I think that we should have because, um, the council offices, it's only myself and Phil that I see most times. Um, there aren't a lot of councillors that use, um, the offices. Um, and I thought, well, if then underutilized, then maybe we can look at a space where we can, um, actually, um, you know, have them available for people to use. Um, but this is being a workshop, those are my thoughts and, um, I'll look forward to the report. Thank you, everyone. I think that, um, concludes the meeting. Um, it's, uh, um, seven thirty, uh, so I guess, uh, that's the end of the meeting and, um,